Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. We are at the Marlboro Public Schools Committee meeting and we will start the meeting at 7:30. I would like to remind everyone that we are taped live at WMCT TV and we are broadcasted and streamed as well. So we'll call the meeting to order. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone can please rise.
I. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We're jumping down to IADOM number six, which is the Superintendent's Report. Oh, sorry. Thank you. I always forget this. If people would show up to meetings and not do remote, we have two members that are remote, so we will have to do a roll call vote for each vote tonight. So thank you for joining us, ladies, and we'll head on down to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Christian. This will be the first of a series of reports on this topic, which is Marlboro Public Schools' walking zones. The bus contract for the fall, so starting in FY '26, will reduce our student transportation by approximately 25%. That means that approximately 25% of students that are currently taking a school bus to and from school this year will be what we call walkers in the fall. I think Mr. Wells is saying no bus zones, right? Instead of, that was the comment. We heard this earlier today. Earlier this school year, Marlboro Department of Public Works created neighborhood maps for the schools throughout the district. Over the last month, each school has been identifying proposed walking zones. These walking zones will be based on the safest routes to schools, not distance. I think we looked at official policy and regulations and it is a two-mile walk zone for elementary students, but we're not saying it's going to be a half mile or a mile. Elementary students shouldn't be coming close to the two-mile, but it will be based on what routes are safe to walk and which routes are not. Those would be where we identified the bus routes. On March 5th, Judy Crocker from Safe Routes to School was in Marlboro auditing prospective student routes as well as park and walk locations, which was a phrase that was new to us and we're really interested to meet with her and talk to her about what different locations she has identified, which might help people park to certain locations and walk to school since more people will be walking. Safe Routes to School will create a student route map that should be completed in about two weeks. We will compare these maps with the school-based drafts and then present to the committee prior to scheduling public information sessions in the next couple of months. Earlier today, I also sent the mayor an email because we're also starting to identify, Mayor Christian had reached out to me about scheduling a meeting with DPW and the police chief. One of the topics we had today were possible areas of focus for school crossing guards and additional crosswalks in certain neighborhoods and signs. So that work has begun. Marlboro Public Schools Elementary Tours, I just want to, tours of each of the four elementary schools were held last week and will continue throughout the month. I would like to remind the committee and any city council members that may be watching this meeting that if you plan on attending one of these tours, please let Patty Sabilio know. She's tracking attendance and will post the tour if enough members are attendings and we will have need to publicly post. And finally, the updated strategies for improvement. As we prepared for the budget book that should be going out in the next couple of days, we updated the strategies for improvement. Goal 2.1 was updated to reflect the district instructional priority and the academic achievement curriculum and instruction goal from the district and school improvement plans. As a reminder, that goal is for us to increase teacher capacity for stronger tier-one instruction, which includes incorporating the six identified district EL strategies, resulting in at least 60% of our students in each grade level K to 10 meeting are exceeding their projected growth as measured by the 2025 Spring NWA assessments in both math and reading. So that is a consistent goal that we've been working on. It is included in our roadmap. We thought that it should also be embedded in our strategies for improvement document. That's all for tonight unless there's any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate the update about the walking zones and I'm really pleased to hear that you all have started to have the communication about setting up a meeting because that was actually on my list of, you know, can that get going? So I appreciate that. Is it something that, once you get these maps, we can share and have some of those Just trying to think about how to approach it because there's some neighborhoods that may lend themselves, which I think are probably what she's going to come back and say, that are lending themselves a little bit better towards walking? And any thoughts that we've heard from the community, at least to start the discussion?
I think, so what we did today, one of the many things we did today was that Mr. Wells started with the district redistricting map and then I think Mrs. O'Brien was coloring, coding it so that we could see it more clearly. Mr. Wells made arrangements so that each building could have a larger copy of that for their buildings as well. That was a starting point. The DPW had provided each elementary school with a map that showed where their half-mile, quarter-mile, half-mile, mile was, and that's as far out as it went was the one-mile. And they've been drawing lines on that as well. Yesterday, the three of us went out with Principal McCarron and we drove the Good Now area to look to see where there were sidewalks, where children could cross safely, or where we would be concerned about crosses. There's a couple of weird four-stop areas that we've looked at three or four times and how we're going to stay away from them, those types of issues. And then today, Dr. Scazza and Principal Richards did something similar during our meeting because we needed more information.
We went on the west side of the city, Simorano Drive and Forest, to see what could be some reasonable walking zones coming from that side of richer, the forekick side, down Sandini Drive. It's that one way that has the buses can enter, but no one else can. So we kind of mapped out a radius of what might be a reasonable walking zone for elementary richer students to navigate that sidewalk crossover to Sandini. We would need a crosswalk there and then they're in that neighborhood, that richer neighborhood, it's pretty safe traversing from there.
And some of the other, like, we have fundamental rules. No one's crossing Route 20.
Right.
Staying away from 495. But looking at some of the major roads and seeing where people can safely cross and where they cannot, and where side streets come out.
So with that, thank you. I'm just curious how we should start to move forward from a budgeting standpoint. You mentioned crossing guards because will we be seeing some of that within our budget book? Will that be something that we're going to need to have more discussions with the city side about whether that would be something that would need to be on the police side? I'm just curious because we've got to factor it in somewhere and I'd like to anticipate in the right way.
We would love to continue and be in the same room and have a discussion because we feel pretty strongly that we support student safety, but we cannot be in charge of student safety throughout the streets. Our systems support structure and safety, but we really don't know the amount of crossing. Like, we know where we want crossing guards right now.
Right.
But we couldn't train them. We wouldn't know those jobs.
Right. So I guess I just say that out loud for all of us, to find a home where that's going to fit appropriately. I just don't want to lose sight that that's going to be some kind of a budget number, whether it would hit with us or on the city side to make sure that we figure that in for next year.
Yeah. I just got the list of streets for a questionnaire today.
Yeah.
Yesterday, so we're looking into evaluating that. So the police chief is well aware that this conversation is happening and so he's on board and we're about to make sure it's to be determined.
Okay.
So we are actively working on it. It's just, just.
Yep, of course. Great. Thank you.
And I think one of the things that we'll be looking for feedback on too when we have public sessions is that there are a number of places that the question was, we believe that a light that could stop traffic in a crosswalk might be what's needed in this place, but is there feedback on that? And we don't know how expensive that is in long term. Is it cheaper? Because that's like, it's an alternative to having a guard in some places.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nothing?
Mayor Christian, I have a question.
Okay.
Excuse me. Mrs. Murphy, in the strategies for improvement, I'm just curious if and when we can maybe get an update on how things are progressing in the action steps for FY '25. I have questions about it, but if you're planning to present, you know, in the next month or two, then I can hold off.
Yeah, we will come back towards the end of the year because we also have the integrated district improvement plan and looking to see what document meets, what purpose in the district is, would be part of the discussion and presentation as well.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none? Okay, we move on. The Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Equity, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor Christian. As part of the district improvement plan, under the student safety and discipline goal, action step 4.5 states MPS will pilot and then implement a pre-K to 12 SEL screener and data collection system, including progress monitoring, with the three steps being research and identifier screener and data collection tool in FY '24, pilot the identified screener and data collection tool in FY '25, and for FY '26 is to implement the screener and data collection tool. Lindsay Castro is here tonight, the supervisor of social emotional learning, and she'll be presenting on the implementation of a universal screener tool and the results of this pilot. Ms. Castro.
Thank you. I think this is on. So, hi, thank you. So we rolled out the universal mental health screener. This is our second year of kind of moving forward with it and having it expand through Marlboro Public Schools. We use two different screeners at the elementary level. We use the Penn State Worry Questionnaire. And at the middle school and high school level, we use the generalized anxiety disorder. They are relatively the same. They are just normed separately for different age groups of kids. And they are both self-administered, so the kids answer the questions independently. We push out the questionnaires to either Panther Advisory, homeroom teachers, and then the kids take the questionnaire and then after that, we move forward. This year, we screened the third, sixth, and ninth graders as our group that we picked. Prior to screening anybody, we send out an opt-out questionnaire for the parents, so parents have the option of opting their students out of this if they are not interested in it. The students fill out the rating scales. The scales go back to the school adjustment counselors who then score the rating scales and based upon the scores, they determine level of intervention that kids need from When students score with elevated rates, we offer a variety of different things. So one of the things is a tier-two intervention group. We use the Trails to Wellness curriculum for that. We oftentimes, for kids with really high elevated scores, we've been referring out, so we've been using a lot of our Cartwheel Cares referrals for that, for the telehealth services. We offer check-ins to students and we offer resources to parents and families and students if they are interested in hearing more about anxiety and worries and things of that nature. The Trails to Wellness curriculum, it's a cognitive behavior therapy model that includes mindfulness and it's, we, it's a, we use around six sessions for the kids, so they get pulled out of classes for six sessions to be part of this tier-two group. And it offers support for kids in an early, meaningful way, and then we do follow-up with them afterwards. After the Trails to Wellness group, we've seen around a two-to-three-point decrease in kids' scores when they are, for their exit tickets on how they're feeling around their anxiety or worries. One of the other offers that we have is the partnership we have with Cartwheel Cares. It's a comprehensive mental health services through telehealth. They can do individual counseling, psychiatry and medication management, parent guidance and family therapy is something else that we can offer to families and students. And this year, we were able to identify 75 previously unidentified students and they were able to receive varying levels of intervention. And I say unidentified students because these are students that were not aware, that were not aware to the school adjustment counselors, of kids that were struggling with some worries or anxieties, so they were not already on our radar. Any questions?
Ms. Michelle, please.
Thank you. Hi, Lindsay. Thank you for your presentation. Two questions. One, did you have a lot of families that opted out of the screening?
No, we didn't. I think this year we had nine families that opted out between all three grade levels.
Okay, great. And do you have enough resources to do what you need to do?
Currently, yes, we do. I think if we expanded it to be every grade level continuously, we'd have to look at a different curriculum that we would offer outside of trails, but I think it works for piloting one grade level and doing it throughout their time and developmental levels.
So with that in mind, the students that, you know, are these identified grades, when they get to the next grade, are they then still going to get services if they still need them or do they have to wait three years?
No. So once they're identified, we continue to do follow-up check-ins with them, so they don't get the full, like, pull-out session groups, but they do get follow-up check-ins with the school adjustment counselors as a regular intervention.
Okay. So I'll be interested next year in hearing how those kids are doing.
Yes.
And whether or not there will be enough services for them when they get to the next grade.
Good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Denise?
I just wanted to ask about the cartwheel because I know it's kind of something new we're using in the district. Is it just done remotely? Like, is it through like an app or, and what's the feedback then, like, in terms of availability? And is it working successfully?
Yes. So it's all remote, so it's a telehealth therapy session for all of that. So it's just like via Zoom. You don't need to download an app or anything for that. The turnaround wait we've seen for that has been wonderful for families. There's not a long waitlist at all. They are available to do it in all languages that we currently have enrolled in Marlboro Public Schools, which has been great too. And the feedback rating has been wonderful around engagement and availability and some of the kids were able to say, like, you know, if you can't make it after school, we can find a time during the school day for you to access your counselor and same with after-school hours. So they've been really flexible in being able to meet our needs.
That's great. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. So, thank you for the update. Love it. Absolutely love it. And I guess I understand about the three, six, and nine. Yes, I would be kidding myself if I didn't say I wish it was more, but I understand from a budget standpoint, there's only so much that we can do. A question I would have is with so many new students coming in at all different grade levels, is there the potential that we could look at trying to reach those students when they are new coming into the district so we get a better idea about that entry? I just don't know how feasible that would be.
I would like to clarify, this year was a, is part of the strategies, this year was a pilot, so we're only doing three grades. That's not to say moving forward that those would be the only grades that we would do the screener. So now that we have the pilot, be having conversations about extending that to include additional grade levels.
Okay. Thank you. That would be great because I'm thinking about our SLIF students especially, or something that popped in my head, I'd love to understand, you know, where they are and that we're meeting their needs and how we need some support. So, great. I think we're interested in doing it twice a year too, when, as we continue to grow, doing it in the fall and then again in the spring so we can target more kids. That's awesome because it gives you more data points of understanding what you're meeting and where we can fill the void. So, awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, moving on. So no minutes to accept, so we'll move on to public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Public comment. Second time seeing none. Lastly, any public comment? And seeing none, so we'll close public comment. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to action items and reports. So we will amend the collective bargaining agreement between the Marlboro School Committee and the Marlboro School Administrators Association. Ms. Heidi, would you like to comment on this or no?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry. We, there was a previous CBA collective bargaining agreement with the administrators that missed a couple of items that had been agreed upon but was not incorporated and you received it in your packet tonight and I would like to make a motion to accept the amended CBA.
Thank you. The motion is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the amended collective bargaining agreement? Seeing none. Correct? All right. We will do a roll call. So I will call you by name. Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Dan.
Yes.
Yes. It, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on. School Committee vote on superintendent. I know I'll jump at this one, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So I think I can speak for everyone on the committee that this task is not an easy task at all. So I did prepare something just because I needed to, otherwise I would wander a lot. So, tonight we find ourselves at a critical juncture faced with a challenging decision regarding the future leadership of our beloved district. This is not an enviable position, but it is one we must approach with the utmost responsibility and care for the well-being of our students, staff, and community. Before we move into the discussion at hand, I'd like to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to those who have supported the process thus far. First and foremost, I want to thank Patty Brown, our Human Resources Director, whose dedication and leadership have been instrumental in guiding us through this process. Patty, your commitment has not gone unnoticed and we are truly grateful for your unwavering support of the district and this committee. I also want to acknowledge the initial search committee, those individuals who took time out of their busy schedules to review candidates, conduct interviews, and ultimately bring forward qualified individuals for consideration. This group has met their charge with diligence and care and their work has been invaluable in this process. We must also recognize the staff, students, and community members who engaged in this process, offering their thoughts, feedback, and vision for the future of the Marlboro Public Schools. Your input has been critical in shaping our understanding of what qualities you needed in our next superintendent and we are grateful for your participation. Finally, I want to thank Dr. David Thompson and Mr. David Lindberg for their willingness to put themselves forward as candidates for this important role. Their commitment to the Marlboro Public Schools has been evident in the time they've dedicated to interviews and public meetings and the courage it takes to undergo this level of scrutiny cannot be understated. Both candidates have shown a deep passion for the districts and we, the district, and we owe them our respect and gratitude. As we begin our discussion tonight, let us do so with a sense of purpose and respect. This decision is not only about finding the right individual for the role, it is about ensuring the continued success and growth of Marlboro Public Schools and the future of our students and our community. This is a significant moment and one that requires our full attention and thoughtful consideration. As we review the capable candidates before us, it is abundantly clear that each of them brings a wealth of talent, experience, and potential to the table. They are individuals with commendable qualities, qualities that are essential for leadership. However, in my honest assessment, there are a few key ingredients missing that are necessary to truly fit with the Marlboro Public Schools and particularly as we navigate the dynamic needs of our community. Marlboro Public Schools is a district of 4,729 students, give or take, and each with their own unique story and potential. Our student body is diverse. Thirty-three percent-ish are English language learners. Fifty-seven percent are of Hispanic or Latino origin and 58% come from low-income families. We have a multi-fabric district in front of us. We also face a high concentration of students with diverse and significant needs, with 73.8% of our students considered high needs. At the same time, we offer over 21 advanced placement courses at the high school, challenging our high-achieving students, and we partner with Quinnipiac College to offer college-level courses that provide valuable opportunities for students who are college-bound. These rigorous programs are offered in a free and supportive high school atmosphere reflecting our commitment to meeting the needs of every learner, the whole child. That's what we've always aimed to do and we continue to do that day in and day out. We are a city, but one that often feels like a close-knit town. Despite our smaller, more intimate community vibe, we have seen significant growth, particularly in the diversity of our student population. Our district is changing and with that, change comes in evolving set of needs that require visionary leadership, leadership that is not only aware of these challenges, but is deeply committed to addressing them head-on. As we move forward in this process, we must keep in mind the unique makeup of our district. Our next superintendent must not only be a capable leader, but also someone who has the flexibility, cultural competency, and the vision to respond to our growing and changing needs. This is not a one-size-fits-all position. It requires someone that can connect with our community, understand our challenges and meet our students where they are while pushing them towards excellence. After careful consideration, many sleepless nights and countless discussions with a wide range of stakeholders, our community members, staff, students, previous superintendents, and educational leaders across the Commonwealth, I've come to a very difficult conclusion. And it is with great respect for the candidates that I must express my belief that at this time, neither candidate is the right fit to move forward for a vote tonight. This decision has not been easy and it comes after deep reflection on what is truly best for our district and for our students. I believe we need to start a new search for a superintendent who more closely embodies the qualities that are- the qualities that are critical to Marlboro. Specifically, we need a leader with more experience working with a diverse population and in an urban district setting. Our district is growing and evolving, and it is imperative that our next superintendent has the necessary expertise and vision to meet the unique needs of our community, someone who not only understands the challenges but has a proven track record of addressing them It's not a decision that I take lightly, and I know it will come as a disappointment to some, however, the future of the Marlboro Public Schools and the success of our students demand that we remain steadfast in our pursuit of the right leader, one who can guide us through the complexities of a rapidly-changing educational landscape. And I am confident that by reopening the search, we will find the right fit, someone who can truly help our district thrive in the years to come. So with that decision from me, I feel that it may be our need to proceed with a new search, to find a right leader who can truly serve our community and the students in the long term, and I'm, I feel that that is the best move forward at this point, my perspective. And I'm sure we're going to have more discussion, but I could not move forward on a vote without speaking my mind to the group and letting you all know where my head is. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to share their sentiments? Yes, Ms. Michelle. Excuse me, Ms. Heidi.
Thank you. And Mrs. Hennessy, thank you very much for your message, crafting it, and I first would like to thank you and the members of the search committee who, I truly believe you did your job properly, and you brought the two best candidates forward. I met with the candidates during the day that they were here, I had the opportunity to attend the forums as well as obviously the interviews, and I have to say with great disappointment also that I struggled with making a decision for either, and left me more with the decision of neither. I just, I, to your points of the type of district that Marlboro is, the size of the budget, the student demographics, we have always spoken about Marlboro being a unicorn, and unfortunately, that may make it harder to find the right fit in a person. I think both candidates have amazing skills and will bring their expertise to the right districts, but I struggle with some of the things that I found were not representative of Marlboro, and didn't feel that they addressed them in any of the opportunities that we were given to hear them speak. Now, I will say obviously, my experience with the candidates themselves was much less limited than the committee, and I know you diligently went through your choices and even re-interviewed the people, but, and I thank everybody who's given us an opinion, and I appreciate that it's, honestly, I really feel that we've heard from the most people that we've ever heard in any of our searches, and I appreciate their input, and it's all over the place, which unfortunately, again, makes me question either candidate. There's no consensus of the community, and that's disappointing to me, because my hopes would be that whoever is chosen at any point would be very supported by all. And so I too agree that I'd like to see a new search, and how we do that, that's another conversation if that's what's decided by the committee, but I unfortunately don't feel that either candidate is a fit for Marlboro. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to have? Yes, Ms. Michelle.
At risk of sounding like a broken record, I have to echo what my two colleagues have said in terms of the outpouring of support for the process that we have gotten from the school community and parents and, you know, other people that have been really tuned in for the first time, more than any other search I've been involved in, which unfortunately has been many. I unfortunately have been out of state on family-related business, so didn't have the opportunity to meet the candidates in person, but I did participate in the interviews and spent a great deal of time speaking with people around the state that know and have worked with the candidates to do the best job of vetting that I could remotely. And as both Catherine and Heidi have come to their conclusions, I too feel that for the consistent level of work that our district has been doing for the last number of years, moving in a direction together to improve student achievement and meet the needs of our always-changing and very diverse population of students, that neither of the candidates bring to Marlboro the skill set that we need to keep us going in the right direction. I think both of the candidates are accomplished superintendents that showed incredible leadership qualities, and I appreciated that, having not been on the search committee, because I don't think Marlboro is the kind of district where someone can learn to be a superintendent. There's so much work to be done on day one, that I was pleased to see two strong superintendent candidates come to us, but as the process unfolded, it became clear to me that in order for us to keep moving in the direction we're moving, to meet the needs of our staff, our families, our students, we need to look for someone else that brings with us that level of experience, both in the size of the district, the demographics of the students we serve, and, you know, overall, a skill set different from these two candidates. So I would support the idea of reopening the search at this point. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan?
Thank you, ladies, for your comments. I think this is a decision that nobody takes lightly, and the three of you have gone through this more than I think the remaining of us have. My 12 years on the committee, the three superintendents that I've been involved in hiring have all been internal candidates, so this is the first time we've had, or I think Earl, myself, and Dan have had the chance to be part of having an external candidate. And I've reviewed all the exit, all the information that we've gotten from the people who have participated in the forums, the emails we've received, and it does seem pretty divided. I wished it was leaning, it's slightly leaning more one way, but not a lot. I did come here tonight planning to support one of the candidates, so I don't know where we go from here. You know, I don't, I mean, I'm still open to more conversation, I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts.
Mr. Grusso.
I think we've all had the conundrum for the last three or four days since we last met. I also had a lot of the same reservations. I also come in tonight willing, ready to support a candidate, willing may be the, maybe a different story, because we're all looking for the perfect person, we're all looking for the perfect person. I think every school system thinks it has a unicorn, that's just the way it is. Ours is no different, I think ours is a unicorn, believe me, I believe that. I just don't know where we redo another search, we're going to have to refine our search criteria, I think, a little bit more. We have to be more specific about what we're looking for, and not even probably interview people who may be qualified as educators, qualified as superintendents, but if we're specifically looking for certain types of criteria, then we should have that as part of our specific criteria. We want someone that's had so many, has had such a certain-sized school system, has served a certain population. We should be that specific what we're looking for. Again, what we're also subject to is who is out there when we look, and who sends their resumes to us. So maybe looking at making a more, again, we'll discuss this, I'm sure, if we decide to go on another search, a more intensive search that may require a more intensive process than we have put into it. Not that I think we did not do our due diligence, I think we did our work, I did the same thing. I was talking to Mrs. Ryan, I said, I'm not a math person, I keep saying that, music person, and I spent more time today taking all the numbers from the exit tickets and adding them up and dividing them, and nothing came out with anything one to the other, it just did not, it was not, it was not something that was going to put us, me over the edge for anything. During the course of the process, from the beginning to the end, because I was there from the beginning to the end, I have to say that my opinion and my, where my sympathies were going had changed through the process we went through. But it was not changing to the point where I was jumping on a bandwagon, as we band people like to say, and so I just think we really behoove as if we're going to do this, because we know we're going into a tough time. We have no idea what's going to happen at the national level with education, we cannot afford to have a big space between whoever we have, and I really wish Mrs. Murphy would consider one more year, just one more year, or three more, to get rid of, I mean, to get through what we have to go through the next three years. But we need to be careful that we don't leave our system with nothing and a blank, and then have something come up that we have to deal with in a way that we're not prepared to deal with. So, I could go, I said, I came tonight willing to support one of the candidates, but I understand the need for looking for a different person. We are special, we have our own special needs, and I think we need to look at candidates from that lens from this point on, and really refine who we interview and who we want to come and see us, so we can be more prepared the next time to select a candidate that does fit our needs, and then we're looking at different types of qualifications that are more along the lines of what I'm used to looking at in candidates, because I did this, as you know, many years ago, the first time I've ever done this, it was an internal candidate back then as well. So I've done this, but I haven't dealt with it from this standpoint, and it has been an eye-opener, and I wish there was a way to say that something clicked in me that said, this is the perfect thing to do, and it hasn't. I'm just concerned at what's going to happen in the meantime, if we have something happen drastically that affects us, if we are going to be prepared to deal with it. So that's my only concern with waiting, is other than that, the committee will do what's going to do, and I'll be happy to do that. Bob's asked for my voice, by the way.
Thank you.
I just wanted to chime in as well. I share a lot of the sentiments that people have said throughout this process, my opinion did, you know, the needle did move a bit during the whole process. I did come prepared to perhaps support one candidate, but really, what it comes down to is, I want to be excited about who we choose for a superintendent, I want to look forward to them taking over, and unfortunately for me, neither one of the candidates inspired that of me, so I do feel we probably need to do a new search. We do have time, it's not too late, it's getting there, but it's not too late.
My thoughts, talking with other mayors, it's extremely difficult, and it's going to be a challenging road to recruit someone. Having said that, I respect the process, I'm glad that we did not vote on it last week so we could take the time, so I appreciate all of you tabling that. As mentioned, this was a lot of information, and we need to do this right, and we need to do this correctly. As mentioned, I think we're rolling the die either way we go, whether that's a new search or with a candidate. I was prepared to vote on a candidate, I think with the right coaching and the right investment in that candidate, I think that could happen. But again, that's a long road ahead of us as well. So if the committee decides to start the search, I will support that. I just hope that we do find someone sooner than later, only because it's going to be a difficult road and we need to fulfill this role. I know that trying to recruit on the city side has been challenging with critical roles, and I hope that we can find the right candidate that does understand Marlboro. The two candidates were extremely valuable, my concern was that, just from the budget process and the smaller-town atmosphere, I think that gave me some concerns, but being a new mayor, jumping into a big role, I can only talk about my own personal experience and how difficult it was to navigate that, but that's when you rely on department heads, we have a strong leadership team that would support that candidate. So if you were to hire me with my credentials, I wouldn't be qualified for a mayor, so to speak, because this is a $200 million budget of a CEO of a large corporation. So when you think of that, here I am, trying to make it work every day and making important decisions, it's something that I love to do, but I can't do this alone, you know, I have to do it with the people that support and who take pride in Marlboro. I saw that with some, with one candidate who was open to that, and that's why I was ready to support that candidate. But again, we all have to work together, and I don't want a candidate we're not excited about, as Mr. Earl has said. So if that's the choice, then we'll need a motion, and then we can get back to work, because this needs to start probably tomorrow. So if this happens, Ms. Brown, I'm sorry, because now you have to get back to work and find us a candidate, but I would hope that all of you would be invested in finding a solution to this problem once we move forward, because again, it does take a team effort so we can all rise above, and we owe it to the students each and every day.
Yes, Ms.?
Since I kind of threw out the idea, which was not what maybe were on some people's minds, can I at least provide a little bit of insight before we would vote about some information that I tried to pull to, as I was trying to prepare my head, because I would rather make sure we all kind of had that information in front of us, because I think it is part of a critical role of moving forward if we needed to do a new search, right? Because some of us, as you just mentioned, some of us have been a part of searches where we needed to, like, go out and about to go through that, and there are a lot of different ways of handling that, and while Patty Brown was very helpful on trying to move us forward on this search, I would be remiss if I didn't say I think it was awfully taxing on her and trying to do, you know, her other job for the district and also doing a search is a lot. So I did look at other options that we might want to consider, which are certain- So I did look at other options that we might want to consider, which are search firms that help. MAS-C, which we know is our parent organization for school committees, is a group that they do offer support services around doing searches. NESTEC, which is a company that is located here in Marlboro, and they support in many different ways, whether it be searches around school, excuse me, superintendents, or whether it's for municipalities and such. They do handle that type of material in searches. And as well, there's another group called the Collins Center, and that is a group that's associated with UMass Boston, I believe. Boston, sorry, put it backwards. But they do handle doing superintendent searches and educational consults and things like that. Essentially, they all handle it in different realms, so we could be very specific about what our needs and expectations are on a large sense, on a smaller sense, and that would then put more of a price tag to it. But I think it is fair to understand that we are, would probably be looking at something in a $10,000 to $15,000 range if in fact we were to go that route, give or take. Okay? But I just feel like you all needed to have that awareness about those options because I think that that would play a role potentially if we were to go down that path. The other thing, which some of you all may remember from the past, when we did have an interim who was a retired superintendent that had stepped in years ago, Steve Delott, who is a person that you may or may not remember. But Steve had stepped in on our behalf as an interim superintendent, and he had retired. With doing that, we needed to apply for a critical shortage waiver, which is something that we would have to fill out a form that then goes to DSE for approval by the commissioner. And it's not a grant, it's not a given that that happens, but that may be something that might help us to work through this process. One thing that is changed about the critical shortage waiver that was different than during Steve Delott's timeframe, the critical shortage waiver at that timeframe had been for an approval of a year. Currently, as it stands, the critical shortage waivers are for six months. And you can apply then for a second six month should you need, but again, you know, it's not a guarantee. So I think we need to know about that as well, because that may be another portion of the puzzle. So I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same informational page, because it's a lot to have thrown at you, and because of the nature that we need to have this discussion in an open forum, I would want to make sure that you guys have all of these pieces to the puzzle for consideration. Okay? So with that, I would like to make a motion that we do not move forward on voting to hire a new superintendent tonight, and that we would move forward on a new search.
Motion is on the table. Is there a second?
Can I ask for possibly recess? I think they're frozen.
Oh, yes, they are. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Yes. Yes, we will have a two-minute recess to hopefully figure out.
They did look, they looked very stagnant.
We're just so wrapped up in what you were saying.
Usually it's like.
Okay, do we need to do a roll call with those of us here?
They got kicked out, but we're back in, but we're not. So maybe we have to reset here.
So Scott is reaching out. I'm talking to Scott.
Alrighty, welcome back. Sorry about the technical difficulties. We will going back to the school committee vote on the superintendent. So we all kind of chimed in and then Ms. Hennessy was discussing what the possibility of what we can do moving forward or at least different ideas and concepts. So if you'd like to bring us back.
Yeah, so unfortunately with the technical difficulties, I'm not sure that you Heidi and Michelle heard some of the options that I had tried to look into to make sure that in a session like this for the open meeting law that we'd at least have the same awareness. So quickly, I looked into a number of different options that we could consider to support doing searches, like a search firm. MAS-C, which is a group that we all know because they support the school committees. MAS-C does run superintendent searches and they do in different differing levels. So we would need to kind of clarify exactly what our specifics and needs would be. And NASDAQ is another company that is located here in Marlboro. They do searches and executive supports, municipality searches, things like that. And as well, another group called the Collins Center. And all three of these options have varying price tags, but I think it would be fair to say that we may need to earmark, if you were, we'll give or take 10,000 to 15,000-ish if we were going to go that route in potentially hiring a search firm to support us. And the reason that I was throwing out about a search firm is because we have certainly put a lot onto Patty Brown in trying to assist in doing this, yet she has certainly plenty of responsibility for the district already going on. And I can't even envision trying to ask her, "Hi, one more time, can you give it another shot?" So that's really one of the reasons why I had looked down the path of potentially a search firm that might be able to help us if in fact that we went down that route. And then the other thing that I was able to find out, if you remember from a while ago, we had an interim superintendent that assisted us who was a retired superintendent, Steve Delott. And in doing that, when you have a retired superintendent that can help districts in an interim role, you need to, as a district, file what's called a critical shortage waiver and hopefully get that approved by the commissioner at DESI. The difference that I found out in talking with superintendent that is one of the past directors at MAS-S, which is the Superintendent Support State Group, he had advised, and then I looked it up to confirm, the critical shortage waivers are now only on a six-month basis as opposed to previously when we had had Mr. Delott here. That was a one-year critical shortage waiver. So that is just another element to this puzzle that, you know, not saying that that's the option, but I just feel like you all need to know that information. And you can apply for a second six-month interim waiver, but again, it's like none of it is guaranteed. And so I just feel like we need to kind of have that information just in our, you know, in our realm. The information that I had secured around that on having a discussion with folks at MAS-S, another part is, is that based upon where we are in the year, we're in early to mid-March. And so the gut instinct, I guess, would be like trying to go ask for a critical shortage waiver right now, probably would not find ourselves in a position where the commissioner would say yes to it because there is still time to potentially find a superintendent that would fit our needs. And so the suggestion was, it is probably in our best interest if we feel the need that we need to go ahead and go out for a search or we need something different, that it is probably better for us to go ahead and do another search, hoping that we're going to obviously fill that need. Because a critical waiver at this point was probably not going to find an approval. And again, it's rolling the dice, have no idea. But that's the information I was able to garner in my discussions and preparation for this meeting.
My question would be, would the search committee be taking on the next steps, I would assume? Or at least discuss, come up with an idea, or move forward with the next steps as opposed to...
Previous search committee?
Correct.
The previous search committee? Our charge is done.
Okay.
That committee no longer exists, in my opinion. I feel like if we're going to do it again, well, it sounds like we could have the option of going with a firm. Otherwise, I think you need to develop then a new committee if you want to do another internal committee.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Michelle.
Regardless of whether or not we use a search firm, we still need an internal search committee.
Correct.
So we would have to sit a new search committee that could be comprised of the same people should they agree to serve again, but their charge is dismissed at the end of the process. So we'd have to do that again.
Okay.
The other two cents I have is using a search firm may enable us to identify people to speak to about coming here that may not necessarily have been looking to apply at the outset. You know, it might take a little bit more of a headhunter kind of approach to identify somebody that would meet our requirements, and using a firm could allow us to do that.
Any other comments? Sorry, yes, Mr. Dan.
My only concern with headhunting is if someone can be headhunted for us, that person could be headhunted probably easily to go somewhere else. That's the only concern I have, that anybody that's willing to be headhunted, terrible term, would be willing to be headhunted later on somewhere else. I'm just concerned with the way superintendents' careers go these days, that that person would be, you know, willing to leave us to go somewhere else later on, looking for someone who wants to stay here and help us, you know, fulfill our destiny, I guess the word. So that's my only concern with headhunters.
I believe there was a motion on the table and there was no second as of yet. Seconded.
Sorry, I'll second it.
Mr. Chair, I could not hear what you just said.
So there was a motion on the table and I had asked if there was a second.
I don't think they were live when we made the motion, so I thought the motion needs to be re-sent.
I did not hear a motion.
Okay.
The technology was not working.
So sorry. We had made a motion, so, or I had made a motion, so my motion would be for us to not vote on a candidate for the superintendent role tonight and to move forward on opening a new search for a superintendent for the Marlboro Public Schools.
There was a motion on the table and then it was just seconded by Earl. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns, Mr. Dan?
I feel like we're jumping into an empty pool now because I don't know what we're doing after this. When are we going to have that discussion?
We have to first vote on the motion so that we can have that discussion.
But are we planning on doing that soon, I guess is what my question is.
So my hope is that we would vote and we'd find out whether we are in support of that motion, which would be basically saying that we're going to do a search or we're not.
Correct.
And then my hope would we would have a discussion about our next steps.
My only question is, is the discussion going to take place as part of this meeting?
No, it's not on the agenda.
So we're moving that again further away. That's my only concern.
So I could do something, but we have to actually vote on the motion before we can do anything else.
And any further discussion is not on the agenda, so we would just need to vote and then we can put it on the agenda for the next school committee meeting.
Or I could ask for a suspension of the rules to have that discussion, but we need to actually vote on the motion, so that's why I'm trying to have us have a vote on the motion at hand so that we might be able to entertain something further.
Ms. Heidi.
Can I ask a clarifying point on the motion? I understand that the motion on the table is to reopen the search, but I guess, should the first motion be the acceptance or rejection of the two candidates? That that is clarified and closed?
You have kind of two things about the motion.
And the next motion? Be the next steps. I think that that part of the process has to be opened or closed.
So I'll accept your amendment to that motion, right? And I will amend the motion to voting to not move forward on either candidate that have been proposed.
Seconded. I will second that.
Any further comments, questions, concerns? So we are voting to not move forward with the two candidates and to reopen the search.
I believe the hope was to only...
Just close.
Just do the first portion of this, which is only on...
We can do it in two parts or one part? So if you feel comfortable in not moving forward with the two candidates? Okay.
So the motion is voting to not move forward with either candidate that have been proposed.
And seconded. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Roll call. Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Heidi?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. I would like to say thank you to the two candidates. You have a long career ahead of you, to the both of you. It's unfortunate, it's not the right fit for Marlboro at this time, but I know with your experience and leadership qualities, you will find a position that is the right fit. So best of luck to the two of you. It was not an easy decision, as you can tell, so thank you and best of luck. Moving on.
So may I ask for a suspension of the rules so that we can add an agenda item for a discussion about our potential next steps based upon this vote?
A motion is on the table to suspend the rules and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding suspending the rules, not the motion, just suspend the rules? Seeing none. Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
Ms. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Heidi?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. So then I would like to make a motion for us to consider moving forward with a search for, how about a search committee? Initially asking those that were already selected on the previous search committee to see if they would be able to be involved, and if not, then we would need to obviously fill those roles.
Do we want to repost the job or no? Stumped y'all.
What's the process? Do we know what the process, what's the process for hiring a search firm? Like, do we do that first and then post? Do they post? I don't know what the process is for that.
That is subject to Chapter 30B. If it's going to be $10,000 to $15,000, we have to procure that.
Correct. Which opens up a lot more can of worms, which is fine. I just don't see the harm of not, I mean, to post it and, you know, I don't know, I guess...
Post it? And what is it, just go wait and see? Or do we move forward with the RFP? Is it an RFP?
It would be a three-quote process, so it's quicker than an IFB or an RFP. So we could certainly move a little bit faster on it and probably have it, you know, within a week, I would say.
So do we do both? Like, do we repost and do that or do we wait until we do that? Like, I just don't understand the process.
So my thought would be that I think to what Mr. Crusoe was actually saying is that we actually need to put some priorities together about some of the needs that have at least arisen in my, in my mind, as some priority needs that will help us to better tailor whatever we're going to do. And that's, I guess, one of the reasons why I was feeling like an idea of having at least, you know, a search committee of some sort be able to quickly sit down with what the post had been and what were some of the skills, needs, et cetera, that would meet from an acquisition need so that that would be able to then be supplied to whomever the vendor might be. I feel like it's kind of hard to go out to the vendor if we don't have some focus about what our hope is because we can tailor a search in small needs or large needs. When we had done a search a long time ago with Hazard, Young, and Natia, right? I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember. That search was rather large and extensive. We actually had a lot of community forums and needed to go through a process about what our needs were, and it was very, very, very extensive. And me personally, I don't think that we are probably at that point of needing to do multiple forums. I think it's probably more of a refinement of what our needs are and then trying to find the search firm that might be able to help us. And so it may not rise to the 10 grand, but it may, if that makes any sense.
Ms. Heidi?
I was just going to refer back to that process we went through with Hazard, Young, Natia, whatever their name was, and I apologize for butchering it. But I think, I understand what you're saying, Catherine, but I think we're approaching it the wrong way. I think if we could ask Ms. Brown to contact the three companies that you have suggested through the RFP process, they are leaders in searches. That is why you would hire them. They are also the ones, as you said, to help you craft what you are looking for. We can all come up with the ideas of, we've already come up with them because we know what didn't fit and what we are looking for. I don't know if it means spending 5,000, 10,000, 20,000. I would hope it's not that large. But I also think if we value our system as much as we do and our children and what we want, they will make the suggestion of what is in that output for a job description. Yes, we have a job description, but what qualities we're looking for in a person. And they will also suggest how we, they may be the same three people who are on that search committee, but I don't know, you know, as you said, your charge was done and now we have to move forward. And we can start right away with saying things, but that's still, I think they can help us craft that. But I don't want to put the cart before the horse if we're going to decide to use an outside firm. That's their specialty, not ours. And as you said, charging Patty to do more is not fair to her. She did an amazing job and with what we've given her. But I think we have, if we've decided that from the pool of candidates that came before you, that there wasn't a fit, as Michelle said earlier, you know, that these companies can help you look, and I remember it happened with us, they can talk to people that would never have considered Marlboro, but they know are a good fit or they know would be a good candidate for whatever reasons. And, you know, we've met people at the conferences that we've looked at and said, "Ooh, you know, wow, they're doing great things in their district. Wouldn't it be nice if they're here?" So we know they're out there. It's just having the correct people to have the conversation with them. And I don't think any of us are that person. So that's my only suggestion.
Any other further discussions? Ms. Michelle?
I think she already just...
I support what Heidi just said. I, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
Hello? Okay. I agree with everything that Heidi said. I mean, that's, this is what these search firms do. We have worked with MAS-C a number of times in the past. When we did that search with Hazard, Young, and Natia, we were in a very different position and, you know, they do an intergalactic search and that is not what we need. I think one of the local vendors that knows Massachusetts, that knows our district, I think any of those three would probably be good fits for our needs. And I don't know if it's Patty that reaches out or Matt or, you know, whomever it is or one of us. I don't know how that actually happens, but I would say reaching out to them and getting an idea of what the costs might be is the first step.
If that's the direction...
That can happen tomorrow.
If that's the direction you want to go, we just need a motion.
I would make a motion then that we make that first step, that whomever, I'm not sure who the right person is, but that someone either in the administration or on the school committee reach out to MAS-C, NASDAQ, and, I'm sorry, Catherine, who's the third firm?
Collins Center.
The Collins Center to inquire about using their services.
So it's a request for service. Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And seconded. Any other further comments, questions, concerns? Looks like you have a question.
Yeah, my only question slash suggestion is it seems like Matt Wells might be the person to reach out on behalf of the school district and...
I was going to state that.
Oh, so great, thanks. Great minds think alike.
That is true. Any other further questions, comments, concerns? There is a motion on the table to have Mr. Wells to reach out to start the request for services in a second. Roll call, vote if there's nothing further. Okay, let's go. Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Heidi?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
Ms. Denise?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion carries. You have a job, Mr. Wells. Bring us a superintendent. Bring us a superintendent. No pressure.
You don't have an F to do, right? It's going to be fun.
All righty. Thank you, everyone, for that. And again, apologies for the technical difficulties during such a critical time during our school committee meeting. All righty, moving on. Acceptance of donations and gifts. There is one. Saint Obain for Whitcomb School. And that is the amount for $1,002.80. And roll call vote. Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
We need a motion, we need a motion, yes.
Motion to approve.
Heidi, you're not here to motion. Motion's on the table, thank you, there's... Motion's on the table and seconded. I'm kind of missing a step here. Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Heidi?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Denise?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Moving on to reports of school committee subcommittees. Nothing? No policy?
Not right now.
Have you been busy with something I don't understand? No?
No.
Okay, seeing no reports, yes? Oh, sorry, thank you. Ms. Heidi?
I just want to give a negotiations update that we are currently in negotiations with both the cafeteria and the custodians. And things are progressing. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Members forum.
You got it, got it. All right, I have a list. Onto the fun stuff. I wanted to congratulate the production of Frozen Junior that happened this past weekend at the middle school. And then remind everybody that the High School Musical is coming up the weekend of March 21st through the 23rd. And it is Percy Jackson. And then, oh, nobody mentioned the Jazz Award. Hold on, I was going to pull up that information. Is that what you were going to say? So just wanted to publicly congratulate the MHS Jazz Ensemble that earned a gold medal at the Massachusetts Association for Jazz Education District Festival last week, March 4th. And the seniors, Andy Zhang on the piano, Andrew Naim on drums, Naim? Naim on drums. And Chris Mo on bass were named outstanding musicians. So they move on to states on the 22nd of March, and that is held at Norwood High School. So anybody can attend, sometimes there's a fee. So yay for them. I got two more things. All right, Heidi and I reviewed and signed the warrant, or I signed the warrant. And then I just wanted to mention, anybody who might still be watching, the Marlboro Junior Women's Club, Metro West Princess Boutique is this Saturday at the high school from 8:00 to 3:00. If you are a student or know a student in need, they can still register for an appointment. But you do need to register for employment. We don't really take walk-in, so please register if you would like to attend. Oh, and in case you don't know what it is, I probably should state. It's an event where any student in need can come and get a prom dress and accessories to help ease the financial burden of the prom. We have currently 196 students registered.
Excellent. Congratulations to the Jazz Ensemble. Yes.
Oh, next up. So next up is just a quick question. Budget book. Will we be seeing a budget book shortly? Because time's a-ticking towards our meeting.
We were making edits earlier, and I think Mr. Wells is waiting for my message that I was doing tonight.
The last piece, yeah. I was to write the superintendent's message, and then the books will start being put together this week. And we will have electronic copies as well.
Okay. I'm just asking, do you feel like we have a chance of seeing that? So we will have it for the weekend? Only because it's a lot to go through.
You'll do electronic and printed? So electronic will come first?
Yes.
That's awesome. Thank you. I'm sorry for kind of jumping, but I know that I want to be able to have an effective meeting next Wednesday. And not having it over the weekend would lead me with not getting to it. And I think probably some others of us. Because side job this is, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know the date? I believe there's a craft fair, Marlboro High Craft Fair.
Sunday is the Crafty Panther. It's a craft fair to benefit the student council. So that is this Sunday. I forget the times, but there is no entrance fee. But there's a lot of vendors, so stop by and see that as well.
Anything else from Members Forum? You know what I need?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns about adjourning? Seeing none. Last roll call vote. Ms. Michelle? She's frozen. We can adjourn with... Ms. Heidi? Yes. Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine?
Thank you. And good night, and yes.
Thank you. We need a yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, we adjourned at 9:06. Thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. Have a great night.